Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's city council meeting. It's August 12th, 6:00 PM. We're meeting at the Camas City Hall. First item on the agenda is I will give an invocation. After I do that, if you will all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, we'll go to that point. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the July 8th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Questions, comments, concerns?
I just didn't know on page two, line number 18, I didn't know if star was supposed to be center. Because we're talking about High Star Ranch, and then they were informed the event star parcel, and it could be star. I just don't know what that, I just didn't know if that was correct.
Scott?
Do they have an event star parcel in?
That's what he said on the recording. It might be their new one, but I don't know.
I think it's called event center parcel. I think it's called event, that's super lot number two, isn't it? Is event center parcel? It's the commercial part, yeah. So I think it's event center parcel is what we're subdividing with this. Or was just subdivided in the planning commission last week.
Or?
Partially.
Yeah, or was, or was approved based on the development agreement or something. They didn't change anything.
Nope, no changes.
It was already approved. They were just coming back to?
Yep.
Get things in motion.
Yep, get a final plan.
Okay.
So I think Kim on line 18, page two, it should say they were informed the event center parcel was going to be sold separately.
Good catch, I missed that one.
And then the only other thing that I had is on page four, line item 45. And it says Scott Kettle reported there's approximately 300 feet to go to the sewer project. And is it a pipe, 300 feet of, I feel like there's something missing there.
A pipe, yeah.
A pipe? So I would just ask that we include a pipe into that.
Okay, any, any other comments or corrections or thoughts? I would entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes from July 8th with the amendments made by Leslie.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is approval of the invoice register dated August 7th, 2025. I have here in my hand, in addition to that invoice register, for the sewer project, the CDBG sewer project to Silver Spur Construction, in the amount of $151,740.60. And this represents a majority of the payment. What would, would not be represented here is the 5% retention and some money for the four gates that were agreed to as part of the project for access through, through that easement. So if you find it appropriate to make a motion to approve the invoice register, would you include that one as well, please? Okay, invoice register, comments, questions, concerns?
On that Silver Spur Construction, are they coming back to fix the road on Main Street? That is like when you go over it?
I was hoping they would make it into a full speed bump.
That, that's UDOT's call.
Okay.
So, you know, we've talked to the inspector and it's UDOT's road, so they, he will either accept it or make him come back and mill it, so.
So is it our job to get in touch with UDOT or UDOT just?
Yep, I've already talked to the inspector, so.
Okay, it just seems that it's not the quality that they dug out.
I agree, so.
Any, any other comments, questions on this invoice register?
Just for education purposes, which one's the roads mind comments? I'm not familiar.
Will you tell us what page you're talking about?
Oh, yes, it's under HROX Engineering. There's several line items for the roads mind comments.
Again, what page are you?
Oh, sorry, that, page two.
That's Bill Levitt's project. Thank you.
Just to the west of Wellers.
Oh.
Where the?
Across the street or?
No, on the same side as Wellers, where there's a whole lot of material.
I feel like I asked that question last time, so sorry about that, friends.
No problem.
No problem.
Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Leslie, did I?
Yeah, no, you're good.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I just have.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the invoice register dated August 7th, 2025, as presented with the additional Silver Spur payment of $151,740.60.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda. Public comment. This is the public's opportunity to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So if you have a comment, please come to the podium, state your name, present your comment, and be courteous of others who may have comments. So be courteous with your time. Public comment is open. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium, so we're just gonna move on. Next item on the agenda, Summit County Economic Development Advisory Committee to discuss the economic climate and trends impacting our communities. Jeff? Many of you are aware that two of the members of this boards, of this city council, sit on this economic advisory committee. One Jessica sits on, I don't, is just a member, and then I am the elected representative on this board, so. Doesn't mean I'm gonna know what Jeff's gonna tell us, but. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here. The Economic Development Advisory Board was established, I think, about four years ago, three or four years ago.
Uh, why do I want to say 2020 or 2019? It's been, it's been a while.
Been a while, yeah.
It's been a while, because we did a whole bunch of things during COVID.
Right, and so the purpose of the, of the board is to gain insight on how we administer our rural county grant dollars, which are now live on our webpage. So you have qualifying businesses. If you just go to economic development, look under rural county grant, you'll see those applications are all online. And we have a small business grant, we have a broadband grant, we have a workforce development grant. And then we have grants targeted more specifically to the wine ship area for fire and water infrastructure development. Those grants are post-production grants, meaning that folks have to do the project first and then are reimbursed. And we provide a 60% reimbursement up to the maximum amount of that grant for that particular item. So there's more grant dollars and things like broadband and infrastructure because that costs more. But like on the small business grants, I think the cap is $20,000 per business. And there's a 40% match requirement on all of these grants. So with that, part of our other task is to advise the council periodically on economic climate within the county. And part of that mission as well is to provide a demographic and economic screen of what's happening. And so we can pull this information out.
We just, we just did a trial run, so we know this works, but.
There. Perfect, thank you. So, I've been monkeying around with the slide. Some of the things that, that are happening in our region, as well as across the country, are that the US economy slowed a little bit. You saw, you know, a lot of the blue in the news about job creation numbers in the last two quarters. Consumer spending is also slowing a little bit. But one of the fascinating things that's happening is that the amount of money that is being spent on infrastructure related to AI is off the charts right now. And so what you see happening are, and this is why the governor and others are pushing all of this creation, this facilitation of additional power, is to run these data centers that these AI, basically, infrastructure requires in order to run them. And the amount of spending that you see in the green line on this graph is for the first two quarters this year, more spending than, it exceeds consumers, total consumer spending for that first two quarters. That's never happened before in the history of the US economy. So the amount of money that's getting dumped into that is scary and exciting at the same time. Some of the other things that are happening is like, when we look at employed persons within Summit County, you can see that our trend, and this is only looking at QCW employment, which means if you're getting a paycheck, you're not self-employed or what we call a trust fund or railroad pension beneficiary, or what we call an extended proprietor, you're kind of in this number. And you can see how our economy, when it comes to employed persons, we peak in those winter months because of the ski industries, primarily in the Steinfeld Basin. And you can see that we fall off in the shoulder seasons and then start to grow through the rest of the year. So the unemployment rate of Summit County is 2.7% for the most recent release. That's the lowest of any county in the state of Utah. Usually we have a little more flex this time of year, but this year we don't. It's a much tighter job market. The state of Utah is at 3.2%, also low, and the nation is at 4.1%. You know, usually the mark is a 5% unemployment rate allows for flexibility for people to change jobs without labor being so constrained that you're driving up wages. But you can see the challenge that we kind of have ahead of us is that during our seasonal employment in those winter months, primarily from November to the end of March, is that we add between 2,600 and 3,900 additional workers to help us through that winter season. This year, one of the challenges that we may face are that when it comes to our J-1 visa holders, who are classed as student visas, they come over and work in the hospitality industry. I don't know whether or not those folks are going to be able to come this year. And when we look at those numbers.
What that means is that you can see that we have throughout, at least going back to 2018, those numbers, those combined numbers of J-1 visa holders are between, you know, 1,900, 1,700. So around that 2,000 mark. And so if they make up that percentage of our seasonal employment, this winter may be interesting for all of us. There may be some opportunities to, for some extra work.
Hey, hey, you could go back to be a lift attendant again.
Yeah.
You could be a Liptie?
I was, Park West. Got me through high school, lied about my age. Jeff, how long do J-1s last for? I did, yeah. It's, it was 40 some odd years ago, you know, it doesn't, I don't think there is. Jeff, how long do J-1 visas have last?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that, that some of the staff, when I, I used to live at the Canyons Resort, and some of the staff, when they finish there for the season, then they would go to a cruise ship and work, you know, part of the time there, and then some were rotated up to like Grand Teton National Park in the summer to work at like Jenny Lake Lodge or Grand Teton Lodge. And so I don't know the answer to that question, like what the, what the time limit is on that. I just chased down the numbers.
Okay. Jeff, what's your, what's your estimation on the J-1s? What kind of housing issues come with the J-1s?
Well, they're, those are always there every year. They're responsible for finding their own housing. They, of course, get help from the businesses that they're working at a lot of times. And some of the businesses have housing that they offer to that labor pool. What's strange is that this year, I've reached out to this Bridge USA organization that I got the data from, and I said, is there, can you tell me where we are with the J-1s? And they said, well, your guess is kind of as good as mine, was the feedback that I've gotten. So I don't think people really know at this point. And we're kind of getting towards, you know, the end of the summer, where we need to sort of figure this out on whether or not they're coming, but that could be a potential challenge.
And Jeff, one last question. That J-1s is just in Summit County, doesn't include any of the Wasatch County?
No.
New East Village?
No.
Billions of people over there that's needed?
No, these are just numbers I collected for Summit County. The numbers are available for Wasatch County, but I?
Yeah.
I didn't put them in. And then the hospitality industry in general. You know, I collected this one story from Colorado, talking about how they've seen a decrease in international visitors this year. So tourism is a little bit, is slowing. More visitors from interstate day trippers, which, who spend less money than our international guests and from people from outside the area. Las Vegas has seen tourism drop 11.3% this year. And so a lot of folks kind of wonder where all this is gonna wind up with all of the, sort of the, the issues related to immigration, tariffs, all of that in the mix. So I think people are still waiting to see where that all falls out going forward. We also have a new tool called Placer AI. So we're tapping into that AI market that's creating all those high-power bills for everybody. And so I pulled up CAMAS and just from the, the, the beginning of January to the current date, then this is out-of-market visitors. So CAMAS has had 261 and a half, I don't know how you get a half, out-of-market visitors, and how much time they spend in the area, number of total visits, and then the median daily time spent in markets. And this data is collected from cellphone signals. So the Placer AI tool, whenever you go to a visit or go to a business or wherever you go, it screens out the population by three groups. It says, these are folks where we've collected a signal that live in the area or, and work in the area, or it's a signal to somebody who works in the area, but they live outside the area. And then the third one is just the visitors where they show up for maybe a week or two weeks. And so the AI has the ability to separate that and provide that information to us. And it also can tell us things like, you know, what are the, the days in which people have, you know, where there's a lot of visitation going on? And, you know, you'd start to look at this and you can see these, these peaks on that, getting close to that July 24th celebration where, you know, start to pull a lot of folks in.
There's our justification for, for our restaurant tax grant right there. Thank you, Jeff.
And then population. Jeff, real quick. Sure. You said 261 and a half, but I saw a K at the end of that. Is that 261 and a half thousand? Thousand, yeah. Thank you, because that's a, that's like a big difference. Yeah, yeah. I just want. Huge number, yeah. Just to kind of move over to population. Contrary to popular belief, most of Summit County's actually been declining in population, even though if you were to ask a person on the street, you know, they'd say, oh, we're growing like man and traffic's horrible and, and blah, blah, blah. But Hennifer, and there's two lines. One is the US Census Bureau estimates in orange. The blue is the Kimsey Gardner Policy Institute Utah Population Committee number. That's now the official number for the state of Utah. So, you know, that's something that, when it comes to like recording your building permits that you issue with your city, then you want to make sure that you send that information to the Kimsey Gardner Construction Database, which is the Ivory Gardner, I think, is database. And make sure that they have that data and it's updated, because that helps to drive their population model as well. Colville has grown a little bit, going back from 2020. You can see that over the past year, that, you know, at least the census estimate was that they gained, you know, less than 10. But the Kim Gardner Institute actually showed Colville also declining in population by a handful. Oakley City? Oakley City, then you can see that Oakley has been declining in population since 2022 in both models, following kind of the same trend. Oh, I got Colville in there twice. Hennifer Township. So CAMUS has also been in that same scenario where sort of peaked, depending upon which model you're looking at in 2022, and then has been declining since 2022. Francis, though, has been really adding people. You can see that even over the last year, they've added people, and it's been a continuous upward trend going back to 2020.
So with this census, is it like primary homeowners or second homeowners? Are they figured in?
This is resident population, not second homeowners in the mix.
So I think that's probably why a lot of these places are showing decline, is most of your people buying homes are second homes or older people that, because young families can't afford to live around here anymore. So you've got those two other, that would be my guess on both of them.
Population growth or declines happen for two reasons. One is what we call net natural increase, where you have more births than deaths. And that's a really steady number in Summit County. If you look at that on a year-to-year basis, we're looking at like 230 net increase of net natural increase in that range. The net migration number, kind of what you talked, touched on, is much more volatile. And so we have people moving in and we have people moving out. And kind of what the data says to me is that we have older, more financially affluent people moving in, and we have younger families that are chasing, you know, trying to get a house with a yard, and they're moving out because it's cost prohibitive to find that type of housing within Summit County. It's a real challenge. And then Summit County's population, I added even a third line just for fun. We have another tool called Lightcast Developer that we do for a lot of our internal forecasting, which is a labor model database. And it projects out even 10 years. And it's the more conservative probably out of the bunch. And you can see that Kim Gardner showed that we're at 43,304, the census at 43,109, and Lightcast at 42,822.
Jeff? So go back to that last slide. So the US Census number, that's a decennial number, right? Every 10 years, you get a number.
They update that every year, usually July 1st through survey.
Okay, so that's an estimate?
Yeah, it's an estimate, yeah.
Okay.
And then Lightcast, their model is a lot more dynamic because it's updated every quarter, and it has its own methodology for looking at jobs, also analyzing the population data from census in their model. And the one nice thing about the tool is that if there's a significant change, that's reflected in the next quarter. So we're not stuck with data that's, you know, where we have to wait a whole year. We get a quarterly update on that.
So does those numbers correct on that 10-year mark, or?
Usually, they all align on the 10-year mark. When we do the census, everybody readjusts, but that becomes the base of all of the models.
Okay.
And so some of these growth trends are also reflected in the school enrollment. And this morning, if you were listening to KPCW, then they did an interview with the school superintendent here in South Summit, and he was talking about enrollment numbers this morning. You can see the North Summit School District added some children, and they've been kind of in this upward trend. And then you can see that South Summit enrollment is pretty well-followed. A lot of that similar, what we saw, there's decline from Kamah City, you know, a little more advanced here, because I think what we're seeing is exactly what Councilmember Guy said with regards to younger folks without kids. They're kind of leaving and being replaced by folks my age and older. Park City School District is in this, has been in this mode for a few years now. So you can see that they peaked back in 2021 and have lost considerable number of kids, and that's why they opened to grades this year and allow for open enrollment. So when it comes to earnings, we have a couple of ways that we measure earnings. One is what we call the average earnings per job. And this is where you take all of the money that people earn, dump it in, then divide it by the number, total number of jobs, to come up with that average. And you can see, I plugged in zip code data to grind this out of Lightcast. And you can see that Hennifer, 73, Colville, 75, Oakley, 78, Kamah City, 77, same with Francis, same zip code, Park City, 69. Why would Park Cities be lower? The reason is because they have more service-based economy. And so those that are working that eight-to-five job, that shows up in this particular index. And then the Snyderville Basin at 81. Summit County as a whole, the entire thing, at 76, Utah, 76 and change. And the US is higher than the state of Utah and Summit County. So when I look at this chart, everybody's pretty much, you know, a job's a job. If you're, what we earn in these types of positions from area to area doesn't differentiate too much when it comes to average earnings per job. But median household income is a different story, because we have some areas where people earn their money from dividends, interest, and rent as opposed to an eight-to-five job. And then we also have different household situation where not everybody is working within that household. Where, you know, you may have two parents working in one area 90% of the time. Maybe in another area, they only work, it's only one parent 40% of the time or 50% of the time. So that can also change the numbers. So you can see median household income, Colville the lowest at 90,000. I mean, but still higher than the United States median household income. And then you can see that the highest is the Snyderville Basin at 181,587.
Jeff, back on the jobs, on the income for jobs.
Right.
And I realize that, to your point, it doesn't make much of a difference, but how is that computed? Is that computed? Because I'm surrounded by a lot of people that commute to Salt Lake and their jobs are in Salt Lake. Is that computing that, or is it just jobs that are here in the area?
So what they, if they go and earn something somewhere else, that's not counted in the number that's divided up within this area number.
So our $77,000, since our school district is our number-one employer, that's going to be driving that average quite a bit?
Right. And then, of course, the median household number, that's different. That does take into account somebody driving outside the area to earn their money. That's a very good point you brought up.
Oh, okay.
So you can see those differences. So cost of living. There's an organization, used to be called the ACCRA, it's now called the C2ER. They've been in the cost of living game for probably about 30 years. And they look at these areas, groceries, healthcare, housing, transportation, utilities, miscellaneous. If you have them do your detailed study, they even get down to like, here's what a T-bone steak costs, here's orange juice, here's what's, you know, going to a dentist costs. So, but when we combine all those things into an aggregate number, you can see that Summit County has the highest cost of living index at 136.5 compared to all of these other jurisdictions. Keep in mind that the USA is 100. So if you're, like, you went to County Wyoming, then you're actually below that national average. So if you're below the national average when it comes to cost of living, you can afford to make a little less money, because it may even out if it's that same difference. But conversely, like in the case of Summit County, that can be particularly challenging if you apply the average earnings per job, which we talked about earlier, and then adjust that for cost of living, you can see what happens to folks in Summit County. It's particularly challenging to them, because the costs, primarily with housing and transportation, really challenge affordability. Consumer Price Index, there's been a lot of discussion about it lately. New numbers were just released, 2.7. And then core inflation was also going up this time. It'll be interesting to see, because we're kind of on the front end of all those tariffs. We, you know, how will that impact costs going forward? It's really hard for people to understand what the impacts are going to be at this point in time. I did it again. Okay, area median income. This is a number that you hear a lot of times. And this is a number that is established by HUD specifically for housing policy. And they establish an area median income for every county in the United States. And that area median income number is now at $168,600 for a family of four in Summit County. The, in Wasatch County, it's 136,400 for that family of four. But you can see that since 2017, we've seen a significant uptick in area median income, which drives, you know, housing costs to, to a degree. Because if incomes are rising, then that is what is reflected. So just kind of keep that in mind. Here's a list of median list price for houses.
Hey, Jeff, on the median income, area median income, just to be crystal clear, that's the median household income?
That is different from median household income. Area median income is factored a little bit differently. It's also called median family income. So there are certain households, like single-person households, that are not necessarily included in that number when they aggregate the data. It's basically family households, so that tends to be higher anyway.
So it does include if they have a job, it does include dividends, interest, rent?
It includes all of that, yes.
All investment income?
Yes.
Stuff like that?
And so you can see the impact of that in a later slide that I'm going to bring up. So when we look at housing profiles, you can see that house prices, you know, in the USA, 440, Utah, 500,000. And then, you know, there's not anywhere cheaper than 700-plus within our area. Using the AMI number, and then in my model, I always use a 5% down payment. I use a first-home interest rate, which when I calculated this was at 6.375. Annual property taxes are factored into the model. And then I used an example of $600 in annual insurance. And then private mortgage insurance is factored in, and then an HOA fee of $300. That can vary depending upon housing product, whether you're a detached unit, it can be lower. If you're a attached unit, it can actually be considerably higher in our region. But my model takes all of that into account. And doing that, looking at various housing products, we price these based upon what we call an assumed occupancy. So a studio has one person, one-bedroom has two, two-bedroom, three, three-bedroom, four. To be at 80% AMI, which is classified as being moderate-income housing for our county, you have to be at $440,000 in price. And you can see over here that, you know, the most affordable is Hennifer at 724,000. So that's the significant headwind and challenge to our areas, to find a way in order to, you know, find subsidy, a level of subsidy, to help bring those housing costs down to that level where people can afford those. And then going back to what you mentioned, Councilmember Darcy, with regards to maximum rents that are also based on those AMI numbers. What I'm seeing now, which is different from, say, the prior two years, is that market rents, you know, I go out and survey usually the market for rents on a one-year lease, because in Summit County, if you don't do it that way, people will rent a unit to somebody for the months of, say, April through October, and then they convert it to a short-term rental from November to March. So in my survey work, I always look for a minimum of a one-year lease. And, you know, historically, those numbers were always higher in the market than the AMI for 80% or less. But this time, you can see the median market rents, 1,700 for a studio, 2,000 for one, 2,400 for two. This three-bedroom unit, one you have to throw out, because we had such a small sample size, and we had somebody that was offering theirs for like $9,500, which screwed off, screwed up the whole deal. And then the four-bedroom unit at 4,500. But you can see they're more closely aligned with the 60% AMI target. So from a housing policy standpoint, it's really good for, like, cities to understand this and say, okay, when we're negotiating with developers for new projects, we know we need to at least get some that are in this 60% or below number in order to really be consistent with what people can afford and where the market is.
Jeff?
Yes.
Do you have, these numbers represent Summit County?
Yes.
Do you have numbers that would represent Kamah City, or can you get those numbers? Our moderate-income housing ordinance references, it's either median household income or AMI. I can't remember for Kamah City, not Summit County, because of how skewed it is.
Right.
So is this a resource that we can use to get a table like this for Kamah City?
You could. Here's the way I would do it if I were Kamah City, is that because AMI is, that's the standard for all of housing policy, when it comes to low-income housing tax credits, other federal housing programs, is that what you can do is you can take your median household income number and drop it into a spreadsheet that I've created, and it will automatically populate the income levels. And just to give you an example of what that looks like, this will be, this is an example. This is of, of the.
You disconnected.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me pull that back up.
Yeah, it looks like our median income's $112,000 and Summit County's 152, so we're 73% of Summit County's. So if we were shooting for like 80% AMI or 60%?
80% of 73%.
Yeah.
You're about 50%.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's what we'd be shooting for if we were looking at Summit County's AMI, is the 50% column there.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. I just would like to relate it to Kamah City where that's what our ordinance says.
I mean, 112 versus 152 is, well.
That's substantial.
That's substantial, that's 27% difference.
Okay, we're still. That's enough to, that's enough to make sure that we use the right number when we, when we work with developers.
Yep.
Why is it having such a hard time connecting? Okay, I'm just going to talk through that, because it doesn't want to open my spreadsheet for some reason. Okay, I'm just gonna talk through that, because it doesn't want to open my spreadsheet for some reason.
Thank you. See how this one goes.
So the way to do that would be to take your median household number and build an input-output spreadsheet, and I've done that before, and, uh, replace the area median income number with your median household income number. And then, once you come up with, say, for instance, your eighty percent may equal fifty percent in the Summit County number, in the A, area median income number. So what you do is you simply say, as a matter of policy, this would be our, our numbers, but we know we have to use area median income for the county. Our targets are this, this fifty percent AMI area, or this sixty percent AMI.
We would have to describe that pretty well because-
I can help you do that.
Because, like, that eight, that, that thirty, fifty, eighty, one-twenty have been such standard numbers. And so that's what everybody uses for terminology. So we just wanna make sure, we would wanna make sure that we had a very good explanation or description of how, how we did that so that it, so that it was clear and underst- understandable.
I think the front end, just basing it off of our one-twelve versus the Summit County of one fifty-two, we could get to that seventy-three percent number and then say that's how we got to fifty percent, forty or fifty percent AMI, Summit County AMI.
We would want to maybe describe that in our ordinance or amend our ordinance to say that, to describe that process so that it was clear.
Absolutely agree.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to reconnect here to my presentation. There we go. So when I told you that rents have been coming down, that's reflected in these numbers going back to, um, twenty-twenty-three. And you can see they're starting to come down. And what's really kinda happening is more deed-restricted housing units go into the area. Then that starts to, uh, basically compete with these market products where people were paying fifty and sixty percent of their income for housing, because they just, that was the only thing available. Now that we're bringing more deed-restricted online, it's pulling the market down as well in that product type. And we've got some fairly sizable projects, uh, moving forward, and it'll be interesting to see if those rents still continue to trend down with the addition of those additional affordable housing units.
One quick thing for the council. Our current moderate income housing ordinance does not address rent, rentals, because at the time we didn't need that. It has become more, uh, relevant now, and I've asked Jill to, um, massage that or work through that ordinance and run it through Planning Commission. And we may be seeing that coming, that will include rents so that we don't deal with those guys coming in and saying, well, our rents are gonna be three or four thousand a month, because that's the going rate, and we have some recourse. So we may be seeing that. Sorry, Jeff, thank you.
That's, that's, that's good, Mayor, I like that. Jeff, this is so counterintuitive to me, from at least what I see here in Camas Valley. I don't, I mean, everything that I see, I see rents going up. And I don't know if deed-restricted really impacts us over here in Camas Valley, does it? I mean-
Well, I mean, from the standpoint of, of, once again, the majority of our deed-restricted products are in the Snyderville Basin.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we have several projects, we have quite a few projects that are actually deed-restricted to fifty percent AMI. So that pulls that down. And that's why I encourage everybody to figure out a process, and it's much harder now because the legislature a few years back eliminated, uh, inclusionary zoning as a choice for, uh, cities and towns that didn't already have that in place. So Summit County's inclusionary zoning code is grandfathered in Summit County.
It's Snyderville Basin only.
In the Snyderville Basin, but in eastern Summit County, we can't put that in place.
But Camas' is, because we had it in place before.
You'll have, I, yeah, I mean, I don't know. But if, if, you know, that's something that I think Camas, if you have one in place, then that, that's begins your negotiation point.
We had it in place mid-twenty-eighteen, late twenty-eighteen. So we were in place with the moderate income housing ordinance.
And so the challenge ahead is like, when we look at population out ten years, we see, um, that we're going to, at least in my model, in the lightcast model, we're projecting a losing population of about three hundred and thirty-three people over that span, which is a one percent change. And employment, on the other hand, if we count just QCW jobs, non-QCW, and self-employment, then we're gonna gain eighteen point eight percent during that span and add six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three jobs. And so it's like, okay, where, where are we gonna get the labor for that? And if we count extended proprietor jobs-
What does that mean?
Extended proprietor is like if you have a job, an eight-to-five job, you know, working somewhere, but then you've got a side hustle going on where you make fly fishing rods and sell them. We have a, a huge amount of people that have these side hustle extended proprietor jobs. You can see that, uh, in twenty-twenty-five, we're estimated to have fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two total jobs. And that's more than our population of forty-three thousand. And it's because it's expensive to live here. So people, uh, you know, often create entrepreneurial op- opportunities for themselves to add a little extra money and have more than one job.
So Jeff, okay, you're, you're gonna bring up this one. There's twenty-six thousand people that can be actually employed in Summit County? That are actually working out of forty-three thousand?
Our, our total employment is thirty-six, one-one-nine if we count our total employment base.
Okay.
Okay? But if we add the extra, the extended proprietors, which think about it this way, it's the same person that has two jobs, then if we were to count them as individual jobs, it would be fifty-three, nine fifty-two, as opposed to thirty-six, one-one-nine. Now that becomes more pronounced because of what's happening demographically, uh, where we have, we normally divide the, uh, community up into what we call dependent age cohorts, which are zero to fourteen, uh, newborns to school age, and then sixty-five and above, and working age cohorts, fifteen to sixty-five, although many people tell me no fifteen-year-old works anymore. I don't, I don't know if that's true or not. But, uh, but when you plot them out, you can see that the working age cohort peaked in about twenty-twenty-two and is now declining. And so this, this challenge to fill all of those projected jobs becomes even more pronounced because we have people who are aging out of that working age population, and they're going into the dependent age cohort. And look at the growth from two thousand and one to where they project to be in twenty-thirty-five, you know?
Well, if you, if you take that and you, you take into account the decrease in total population projected, that shows you, um, it even compounds more of the people that are in more our age group.
And so this is a, um, a chart that shows by cohort group. The red indicates areas of loss, uh, or decline. And you can see that people still have those kids, just like I said, they, you know, got that net natural increase. But then when those kids get to school age and they need a little more room to run around, then people are bailing from the area, being, taking their kids with them to places that are more affordable, uh, in order to chase that American dream of having a single-family home and a white picket fence. And we pick up a few in the twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds, these are your stalwart ski bums, whom we love and need. And then, of course, you see the population from seventy, uh, and above is just growing, you know, at astronomical levels. And so the need for more senior services, more health care related to that will also be a growing op-, you know, opportunity within employment in our region. But, you know, it also takes, um, you know, people to support those industries, and that can be challenging as well. And that's my spiel for tonight.
Jeff, how many people do you think commute into Camas versus go out of Camas for jobs versus our population of twenty-one hundred or so?
Let me, uh, pull it up.
I can tell you by the number of people on the road getting out of town.
Yeah, exactly.
It was reported to us by a potential developer in twenty-eighteen or nineteen that eighty-five percent of the people, the workforce, leaves Camas to work, eighty-five percent. Jeff, Jeff may have a better number, but that was then.
Anecdotally, I totally agree. At five-thirty in the morning, I'm surrounded by everybody going to work. But that's, uh, that's a, that's a good thing, but, uh, it's, so what do we do? I mean, nobody can afford to live here. I think the, the street my mom lives on is a perfect example of the changing demographics, uh, in Camas. It used to be so filled with kids, and, and now it's pretty quiet. We're aging as a, as a town, because no one can afford to live here.
See if I can put this on, but there's a, uh, US Census Bureau has a little tool called On the Map, and you can plug any jurisdiction in there, and, uh, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
So you can see that every day, uh, that, uh, a hundred and ninety-six people live and work in, uh, Camas. You know, they're residents here and work here. But they import, Camas imports twelve-hundred-and-eighty-five workers per day, and then it exports nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight workers per day.
Wow, where's the twelve, where's the twelve hun- I guess that's contractors, because, uh, the school district, uh, employs how many? Two hundred?
Uh, I, I know that-
Oh, hey, Shad, how many, uh, how many, how many? What's the, what's the, uh, employment from, uh, the school district in South Summit? Two hundred is full-time? Okay, all right. Yeah. Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jeff?
You're just gonna have to cut this off, because I could go all night on this.
I, I, I'm try, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be respectful of you and Jeff. So I'm trying, yes, thanks, David.
Be respectful to the rest of the council. I'll get with you, Jeff. Thank you, thank you for the presentation.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Camas Valley Community Foundation introduction. Shad, um, I recognize one nice lady back there. She's a bright spot to my mom at least once a week, maybe twice, thank you. She delivers meals on, she volunteers and delivers meals on wheels. So that's, uh, an incredible, uh, service for our community.
And that is Amy LaCoke.
Amy LaCoke.
And she is the executive director of the Camas Valley Community Foundation.
She's awesome. Thank you.
David Simmons is the president of the Camas Valley Community Foundation. And so, thank you for allowing us to be here to share a brief informational item, and especially a congratulations for our successful yesterdays. I think it was much enjoyed, and it's got a lot of positive talk around our community. As you know, or may or may not know, but in March of twenty-fourteen, we organized an education foundation called the South Summit Education Foundation. And the purpose of that education foundation was to be able to recognize and support student scholarship and also to recognize excellence in teaching. And we have not abandoned that mission, but we've encompassed and broadened it. And one of the things that we found interesting is we started looking at data, which we very much appreciate. In a community like ours, when you have a lot of second homeowners, they care about the community and things within the community. They want good education, but education isn't their priority for this community. It's where they were either raising their children, or it could be because they have college or university, um, supportship, et cetera. And so we kind of were always wondering, how do we get that commu-, or that education foundation to the next level? And as well as strengthen our community. And that's where the Camas Valley Communi-, um, Community Foundation spawned from. And, um, basically what it is, is it takes the education foundation, the South Summit School Board approved a broadening of the mission and the bylaws to adopt a community foundation, which still includes education, but it also has pillars in humanitarian, arts, and recreation. So when you say, we hear the tagline, "We hear you," it's humanitarian, education, arts, and recreation. People can choose to donate to projects that are under each one of those pillars specifically, or they can choose to donate to the general fund. And when they donate to the general fund, a majority of that donation will go into education. So our hope is, is we provide a one-stop service for people that live in our community, people that are second homeowners in our community, and developers that want to invest in our community, that as they choose to, um, donate to the general fund of the community foundation, they're supporting all initiatives in those pillars, but they're especially supporting education. So our goal is, as we strengthen and raise education, we're raising all of those pillars. So we're excited about it. We're in the process of getting it rolling, and we are, um, looking for board members both to serve within the pillars and also on the general board. We do have our next meeting, it is going to be happening on Thursday at seven o'clock AM, and we want to express our appreciation to the Kamis City for allowing us to use the Event Center building. And we'll be holding that prior to the chamber meeting that will be happening. We also have an event coming up on Friday, December fifth. It's a mingle and jingle, and it's actually going to be a place where instead of doing a gala, we're hoping that companies will come and rent a table for their Christmas party. Mayor McCormick, maybe you wanna rent a table and bring the city council over to the montage, and we will have some entertainment.
Sounds a little expensive for a little old Kamis City.
Nothing's too expensive for Kamis City.
Hey, aren't we worth it? I didn't say we weren't worth it.
But, but we are hopeful that, that this would be a way that may be our twist on a gala to be able to do a fundraiser, to do a kickoff event for the foundation, and also do something that many companies already do when they have a, kind of a holiday party. So, David, Amy, anything I missed that would be important to share with us?
We were in the parade.
We were in the parade. So, thank you very much.
Shad, could you, could you go over the pillars once again?
Yes, humanitarian. And so that sparked when we had a student that, um, needed to have some medical equipment for their diabetes, and it wasn't kind of within the purview of what we were doing in the education foundation. And so as we were talking about this, it was, you know what? Things like this, or if a fire takes a business and they need support like that, really having a humanitarian pillar would be a great way to support our community. Then, of course, education is the education foundation and inco-, and broadening it. Arts is all sorts of arts, visual communication, and then recreation. And, and again, we're not trying to compete with the rec center, this is more community-type of regi-, recreation that may include, um, trails or walking paths or endless opportunities, and that will be for that pillar committee to work on. So I have a little flyer here, I'll just leave with you. And again, if you have developers or community people asking, "How can I get involved?", we would hope that you would forward them to the Camas Valley Community Foundation, and we can get them involved, and it'll be a one-stop- And we can get them involved and it'll be a one-stop shop where if peoples continue to go to them, they can say, hey, we, we donate to the community foundation. Take your idea to them and let them see if this is something that could be funded. Thank you.
One last question, Shad. Can you go over last year's scholarships that you awarded or?
Amy, do you have those?
Okay.
It's about eighty percent of the senior class.
Eighty percent of the senior class and it totaled up to how much money?
Um, it's about one thousand dollars per student.
Per student, okay, so eighty thousand dollars or so, somewhere in there? Cool, thank you.
Yeah, and then we also did the teacher recognition as well.
Okay, yeah, we're still doing that, yeah, good.
Are you on Facebook or how do we direct people?
We're going to have a Facebook, or we're going to have, yeah, we will have Facebook, but we'll have a website as well. Doug Evans is in the process of getting that set up right now as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shad. Okay, next item on the agenda is Camas Valley Fiesta Days discussion. I really put this item on the agenda so that we could take the time to schedule a work session. And do some, some kind of an overview of how Fiesta went and the lessons learned. I didn't think that we could cover that in this meeting, so. Uh, is there a date that works for everyone in the next couple of weeks? Uh, the reason I say the next couple of weeks is because, uh, there are some things that we need to. Some dates and things that we need to start looking at pretty seriously. So, so my question is, is there a, a. A date in the next couple of weeks and it's probably gonna be better to have maybe a seven o'clock. Work session for an hour and a half, hour, hour and a half, or maybe two hours.
What does our next council meeting look like to?
I don't, I don't. I don't, we don't have anything yet, but, but stuff comes, so I mean, it's possible. I know that, um, Steve has a hard time making it on Tuesdays and Thursdays through October because of tennis. So, um, a Monday or Wednesday works better for Steve and I'd hate to not include Steve because he's one of the. One of the leaders, so is there a different day we can look at potentially? And, um, if we don't have anything on that council meeting, we'll consider canceling that one, so we don't have extra meetings, but. But if there's a.
About the twenty-seventh, that's a Wednesday and it's just the day after council that gives us time to get through school starting and. Schedule settled a little bit.
I, I'm good on the twenty-seventh, the Wednesday.
I, I am, um.
You're out of town, right?
Out of town, yes. Uh, the third, Wednesday, the third of September, would that work for people?
Wednesday, the third of September?
Starts, I think, uh, the twentieth, yes.
I'm open on the third of September. That's, how does that work for everyone else?
That is better for me.
Okay, let's, let's schedule it for Wednesday, September third. And let's do it at seven o'clock PM and we'll plan on an hour and a half. It may, it may. Run a little later or a little earlier, but let's just plan on an hour and a half if that works for everybody. And I think, um, considering that, it would be, um, would be nice if you have. Thoughts about things that we did on Fiesta Days that went well, bring that. If you have thoughts on things that, that we need to work on. That, that we feel like we could improve, um, bring that. I don't know that there's a situation where we just failed that. So I don't know, I think it's more just things to work on, so bring those ideas. Let's have a conversation and let's, um. Have a convers, have a, uh. Meeting where we can discuss some of those things. Plan on maybe even looking at some dates for next year. Does that work for everyone? Awesome, okay. That in, in consideration, we'll move on to the next item, which is Summit County RAP Recreation Grant Application Project Discussion. David, that's, that's your item. Take it away.
Okay, alright, well, um. So if you read the email, you noticed that, uh, the RAP Recreation is coming back up. Application period will be, uh, from September first through September thirtieth. Uh, last year, if you'll recall, there were, in total, there was about two-point-nine million dollars in asks and there was only one-point-six million dollars to award. I'm on the committee again this year and, uh, hopefully it will, um. And the, so the committee work will be during October and the, probably the first week in November will be when the county council approves. The committee's recommendations. If you recall, we asked for sixty thousand dollars for the pavilion out here, playground improvements. And we got fifty-one thousand dollars, which was that ratio of ask or award to ask was significantly higher than. A lot of other people. And I think it is because we had playground in the title. I mean, we gotta, it, the RAP Recreation has been discovered across the county. And so we've gotta be a little bit more, uh, disciplined in, or strategic in what we ask for. Um, it's gotta be recreation. And, um, here are the scoring that the committee works through. And gives equal weight to each one of these questions. And each person, each person on the committee. And there's probably, I think there's seven or eight of us. Scores on their own and then we get together and we talk about where we differ, differed on the scores and we tally it up. And that's a pretty big basis for what goes into our recommendations for the county council. But the questions are, or the waiting is, how close to true recreation is it? That's worth five points out of twenty-five. The number of people served, the community benefit, the viability. And the timing and urgency. And if you go back and look at some of the other asks that were out there last year. And you see where they asked for maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars to do this and then they got either zero or maybe thirty thousand dollars. It's because some of those things were dependent upon, uh, schools being built. Or that, that, uh, they were just barely starting on architectural, uh, drawings. And they didn't know really what they wanted to do. And you could kinda tell, they didn't know what it was. And they didn't really have a good feel for the scope or anything to that effect. I think a pavilion was pretty, you could get your head around that pretty good. So, um, as we think about it, um, I would like to take tonight and just get some, get some brainstorming going. And, and think about things that would be right down the fairway of it. I think Jessica's email that she sent to us. A lot of those things I would be trying to ask for during the restaurant tax. Because they're associated with our rodeos and demolition derby. So anything over there in the rodeo grounds, that's when I'd be trying to ask for that in. Uh, when is that? January or February. But, um, if we wanna do anything with the parks. If we wanna do anything with refreshing the parks or refreshing restrooms or, or shade or mulch and stuff like that. The Beaver Creek Park could probably stand for some improvements. Um, the, the mulch over there is getting pretty thin or, uh, whatever you call it. And a lot of other towns. And I think Francis did this too. They changed out their, just, uh, their mulch with, uh, I keep calling it mulch, the bark. The bark for, uh, when you fall and hit your head. With rubberized bar, um, playground equipment and stuff like that. So, so I'll shut up and let you guys think about it.
Can you tell us what Jess, or, yeah, what Jessica said in her email? I don't think I got that. I deleted it. You didn't get it either, Larry?
Oh, okay.
I don't think she responded to all of us.
Her, her suggestions were quite a bit and they are, they are right down the fairway for, for asks. I think for the restaurant because, because they had to do with upgrading the restrooms in the rodeo grounds. Doing snack shack, the, the shack improvement that Cindy's asking for. Um, doing the water truck for both watering the flowers as well as for the, for the rodeo grounds. Keeping the dust down that we borrowed from Francis. Those types of things are kind of associated with an event. Or, and I know that the committee, which is ninety percent made up of Westsiders. Are going to say, oh, you're only having a rodeo once a year, you're only having a demolition once a year. Uh, we're, we're over here with Willow Creek Dog Park that's got, you know, two thousand visitors every day. Uh, so we gotta, we gotta think about what gets high use. And I'm proud to say that this park over here is getting a lot of use in the restrooms and the pavilion. I'm, I'm proud of what we've done over there. And so, but we need to think about that as far as what would get high use, what would be a community benefit all year long. Does that answer your question? Yes, yes, your, your thoughts.
Would be, I don't know that sidewalks necessarily, but some sort of a walking or biking path up some of our major roads. It's a safety issue and there are people that walk around our community every day. Walking their dogs, walking their kids, they're up around the schools because, and I know we have some streets that have like a little walking path. On the sides, but, uh, they almost need to all be restripped because all of our lines are gone. And so I don't know if that's something that we can, most of our roads are probably wide enough. When you're in Salt Lake, you can drive and see a picture of a little biker on the side, you know, so.
I think that's probably, um, I know UDOT has some grants and stuff we can ask for, for stuff like that. I just wonder how the, the committee would think about walking paths for.
I think new bathrooms at Beaver Creek Park would be a priority.
They're out of order, right?
Yeah, yeah, in more ways than one.
And I can, I can already put, because I see them so often. If we said, you know what, those bathrooms are there to service all the bike riders that are going up Mare Lake or going up over Wolf Creek. I think that would make a lot of impact with the committee.
I think that's a great project.
And the bathrooms or any type of pavilion refreshment and do the, do something with the playground in there. Playground improvements and put it rubberized mulch in there. Um, I could see us doing Beaver Creek Park improvements. I will say, Colville, because it's in the public record, Colville did ask for a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a trail. And paved the trail up along where they're gonna put the new high school and then that got voted down. So, when the mayor came in and, and talked about it, it was like, well, it was kinda contingent on a whole bunch of stuff happening. And we didn't, we did not fund any of that for Colville. We have, I mean, we, we throw two hundred thousand dollars a year. We, with my committee hat on, sorry, we throw two hundred thousand dollars to mountain land, um, to, um.
The Trails Foundation.
The Trails Foundation over there. Um, so if, uh, if we want, if we thought that. I agree, I see the same people walking around too and, uh, at a minimum, we ought to be restriping, getting it safer.
Yeah, well, and you just think with school starting, but you know, you've got all these kids that have nowhere to walk.
That's true. Nope, nope, that, that's, that's.
And I don't, I mean, as a community, it's a school issue as well as a, a city issue, but there's people who walk and.
Yep.
Are on our streets every day.
Right down Second South and right down.
I think Second South, Third South, Fourth South and there even on the ones that go east and west.
Yep.
Three hundred east.
Yep.
And then just even where it ends, like at the church over on the west side, going to the, uh. To our subdivision.
Yeah, all, everything on First West, yeah, exactly, yep. On First West going up to Grassy Creek, yeah.
Yeah, um, but I'm also not opposed to upgrading bathrooms and making a park that is a park people would wanna use.
I would say that if we did Beaver Creek Park, that's, that's much easier for the committee to wrap their head around that. They can picture that. Oh, new bathrooms, oh, a new pavilion, oh, new playground equipment, or at least something so when kids fall off the swings, they're not gonna split their head open. Stuff like that. They can get their heads around that. They would probably be a lot more comfortable funding that.
What about the bathroom, was Jessica talking about the bathrooms at the city park? Because those really could use a facelift. And we do have a lot of bikers that park in that parking lot at the event center. And head out, but there's no.
There's no bathrooms there, right?
There's, there's bathrooms in the event center that they can use on the outside.
Are they unlocked all the time? They're locked, aren't they usually?
Well, we try and leave them open. We've had some vandalism going on, so we're kinda picking and choosing when events going on.
But it, but if we, if we were to remove the bathroom up by the announcer stand and put in one like we have back here. Where we can program times that it opens and closes, that, that's a good project. And we might do the same thing at Beaver Creek Park, um, type building. And we know how much that costs roughly because we just put one in. So we have some pretty good numbers if that's a thought.
I like your ideas with Grassy Creek, but we, I think we've already got a start with that one with the impact fees. And the park money that we needed. But I do like the Beaver Creek Park. I think that the committee can see the proximity from Mare Lake Highway. And the people that use that. And I think, I mean, that equipment was new when my kids, before my kids. So we're talking fifteen years, they're, you know, the swings and things. I've, I feel really good about putting our focus there at that park. Um, get a little bit more, um, use out of it for our, for our citizens, but yet we also do have a lot of visitors, a ton, a ton. That use it or even, I mean, just the barbecue stands that are those old school, you know? And just the dirt that goes up to the cement, it could just use a whole new refresh, I think. I think that would be money we'll spend. And I think it'd have a good, you know, way of improving everything there.
Would, would we be willing to spend money if they're looking for a, a matching grant? Or if we said, we're, the total cost, the total bills, three hundred thousand dollars and we're asking Summit County for two hundred. Are we willing to put up a hundred? Could, could we use impact fees for that?
There would have to be new facilities for impact fees to be used.
Absolutely brand-new facilities as in expanded facilities or?
If we're replacing the bathroom, that's, we're, we're replacing the bathroom. That's not, if there's already a bathroom there. If there wasn't a bathroom there, like here, we could use impact fees, but where there's already a bathroom, it'd be hard to justify using impact fees for that.
Most grants do better in evaluation with at least a twenty percent match. And I think the city ought to at least be willing to commit twenty percent of whatever the project is towards, and maybe even a little more. But at least twenty, most grants do better at that number.
Totally agree.
I think that's what the council ought to look at is twenty percent.
And I think our citizens would be on board with spending money towards that, so.
Do you think people use, like, so we have a park here and then we have the Beaver Creek Park and then we have the one at our event center. Are all of them used or are we just, do you know what I mean? If I had to choose, I'd come here or go to the one at the city park, just because they're newer maybe.
I think Beaver Creek's a parking area for people to walk to Main Street. Like David said, people park there and ride their bikes up the canyon.
I think you'd increase usership or the use if we upgraded some of the facilities. Yeah, I do, I do. I think that would make it, I think that would make it a definite impact.
Here's my highly scientific survey from this morning. Cause I have nothing else better to do, but there was probably twelve people over here at this park. Only because the library canceled, uh, Storytime because it was Election Day. So there was a lot of people over there and they were using the bathrooms and the pavilion. And, uh, then we got over to Beaver Creek as we went back to Beaver Creek and, uh, on the way home and there was probably about seven people there. I was surprised at that, but there was seven people. I didn't recognize them, but, uh, the park does get it. I, I don't, I know there's not as many kids in our neck of the woods down in this quadrant down here. Um, but still, a lot of people walk to it and use it for a little bit. But this one, this one gets a lot of out-of-town visitors. Man, it gets a lot.
Part of the Rudat grant when they did that study was the way finding signs throughout the town to find things. I think a lot of people don't know. I mean, if I've lived here your whole life, you know it's there, but I mean, a lot of new people are like, what park? You know?
That's true.
So, but I think, you know, that, including that also to say that, you know, we are encouraging this. And we do want people to enjoy them, so.
So, are we, uh, good with Beaver Creek?
Yep, I am.
Okay, good, I am too, I am too. Um, are we, uh, looking at a restaurant? Um, are we, uh, looking at a restroom, restroom change out?
I think, uh, restroom pavilion, um, and potentially the turf or the, um, surface underneath the playground equipment would be, uh, something we should consider, Dave.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Okay. And again, I think, um, Scott has relatively recent numbers for most of that stuff. So, at least that would give you a baseline.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Are we okay to move on then?
Yes, yes, sir.
We good, alright, we'll move on to the next item, uh, on the agenda which is department reports. And, uh, Jill, I'm gonna start with you.
Okay. That is happening in planning. Um, we just had the subdivision approved by the planning commission for High Star, so it will be in the works. And then, we are in the works of updating the code. Sorry, trying to find my, there it is, for body art slash tattoo facility, um, amendment in the city. I don't know if there were any questions on that. They're going to do a draft at the planning commission this next month, then it will come to you. And, what else is there? Oh, State Route thirty-two. So, they met with mayor and, uh, Tim Giants and myself last week.
Thursday.
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 So, um, they've got, the survey is now closed, they're moving from phase two to phase three. And they have discovered that affordability is a big issue valleywide for everyone. Also, nobody wants roundabouts and nobody wants sprawl and nobody wants couplets. So, those are the big issues they found.
We got rid of those, Dave.
Thank you, yes, that's good.
Yes. Um, they're looking at, if you looked at the three options, option two was the highest rated. So that's kinda what they're doing is moving along that lines of the meadows concept with some connectivity.
So.
Connectivity.
So what that looks like is, is preserving the meadows and concentrating on the current commercial zoning through Camas as an area to focus on. And, um, so that's kind of, kinda the direction we, we talked about and, and maybe more focus on making, um, thirty-two safer between the communities with turn lanes and stuff. And, and not necessarily focusing so much on attracting businesses to certain areas, um, using our current commercial zone, so something like that.
Okay.
That's everything I have, unless you have questions.
That stands to reason, I really want to get rid of the village overlay that the county has in the middle of Marion, because Marion can't, doesn't have the infrastructure. We would be having to increase State Road thirty-two. We've got the infrastructure on two forty-eight with our, with our entry corridor.
Interestingly enough, I think they found that same thing out in Hoynesville.
Yeah, they did, yes, there's, yes. But, but, that, that developer still owns that land, so it's probably gonna come right smack back at us, but.
Uh, it's, yeah, it'll be interesting.
Yeah, well, um, Jill, the, uh, the audio and the video for the, uh, for the, uh.
Planning Commission meeting.
For the planning commission meeting was, was challenging, it was, it was challenging. I don't know if anybody had their, um, microphones on or not, but it was, it was hard to watch. It was also hard to watch on the panhandles, it was, it was, that, that was an interesting discussion. The chestnuts coming in and, and, and asking what, what is available as far as panhandles. And, and we want kids to be able to live up here, we want it to be affordable, we don't want sprawl, we don't want the meadows, we don't want people going into the meadows. And yet, if you look inside Camas, we have a lot of empty acreage that is growing weeds and old cars. And, and I, I think there are some, there are some issues that, that made me flinch or there was some, some things that were said that made me flinch a little bit when we were talking about the panhandles. And, and, uh, I'm still a proponent that we can make panhandles work or ADUs within Camas City and increase the density if we have the proper guardrails around the development of those properties. So that they don't infringe upon the neighbors, so the things that people are very worried about that happens with a panhandle home, uh, doesn't happen. And so, um, I think some of the commissioners were making some very good points. And, but we gotta do something, because here was an example of something that we've said we wanted, we wanted kids to be able to live here. And here's the one way this kid could afford to live here was because he was gonna get property from his parents. And it's, I feel like, uh, we should be increasing that development.
Okay.
I'm just gonna get off my soapbox on that. And then on the other item is you asked the commission what you should be working on. And, and I think there was a statement that says, well, you know, especially with definitions, and somebody said, start with A. I would, I would go further than that. I think we've, uh, unfortunately, our neighbors to the south have had a lot of issues with definitions. And they've, they're either getting sued by the developer or they're getting sued by their own residents. And I would be starting with the definitions where it looks to be nebulous, where we find ourselves in the same position as our neighbors to the south. And not, not having a, a no-win situation, because what we thought was a building height or what we thought was the definition of a story, it doesn't, isn't that. And all of a sudden, we find ourselves having to approve stuff under protest, um.
Let me, let me give you a little heads up on what I've asked Jill to approach the planning commission with. It's okay, Jill?
Of course.
So I've asked Jill to, um, go through our land use code with the planning commission. It's roughly nine years old, maybe so-ish. Also asked her to go through the general plan, those things change. Uh, to your point of definitions, we have a code that talks about, um, mixed juice and commercial being on the, on the main floor. We do not have a definition of commercial. So, your point is accurate, I've asked Jill to work through that. There are a couple of things, um, I've also talked to her and a couple of the planning commission members with that, um, I'm happy to discuss with you. Okay.
Okay.
So, we're gonna be busy.
So, we're working on definitions, yes?
So we're gonna start with fifteen point zero two.
Reaching out to Francis about what they've learned as well.
That's good, yeah.
So we're starting at fifteen point zero two, but there are fourteen pages of definitions, so, um, in an attempt and, and just to give you some, um, perspective, when we went through this the last time, it was twenty eighteen with, the start of twenty eighteen with Jackie. And Scott, if you'll remind me, it took maybe five meetings to get through the definitions, uh, because they are so important. So, when they said they were gonna cover, um, A and B, that meant, um, thinking outside the box through those letters of the alphabet in our definition. So, yes, it was what you said, but maybe a little deeper. So that's the plan.
Okay.
Of course.
Jill, anything else?
No, I think that's everything, unless you have questions.
Um, I will tell you that, um, Jill has jumped in and is learning a, a bunch and, um, she's, she's further along than, um, I think she or I anticipated, so she's doing extremely well. And she's taking a load on and she's gonna be extremely busy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott?
Okay. First thing, um, we got the EV charger installed. One thing I learned is we can either charge people to, um, when they connect to it, or we can just allow them to connect to it. Summit County, I called them to see what they charge and they don't charge for their, um, their class two or whatever that they, they take longer to charge like ours is. So the ones that they have over here, they don't charge for. So, um, I wanted to get some direction from you guys tonight just so we can get it set up. I would recommend that we not charge and see how much use we get, what kind of cost it comes to us before we start looking at, um, charging. You know, we got the grant, um, to install them, so that's, I kinda wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with that before we move forward with, with doing that.
I like that, let's see what use we get out of it and if we get people that just abuse, you know, obviously, it's there for everybody.
Yeah, and it's.
Get your overnighters.
Yeah, talking to, um, somebody that uses it, one like this, you know, you'd have to park there for eight, ten hours to get your car fully charged, so it's, it's not something.
It is just a class two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I like your idea.
Is everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get that going. Um, next, um, I kinda wanna report on the, the traffic study. We're still kinda trying to fish out some recommendations on how we wanna do it. Um, it came back that the, the intersection of two hundred south and three hundred east, um, does not warrant a four-way stop right now. There's about fifteen hundred, um, cars a day that travel two hundred south and about the same number that travel three hundred east on a daily basis. Um, the, the average speed, um, on two hundred south is twenty-nine and three hundred east is twenty-four. The eighty-fifth percentile, that's kind of what, um, we use to set speed limits, um, like if UDOT was to do a traffic study out here and they came up with the eighty-first percentile, they'd say that's what the speed limit needs to be. So, on two hundred south, the eighty-fifth percentile is thirty-three miles per hour and on three hundred east, it's twenty-eight miles an hour. Um, but, the max speed on two hundred south was fifty-one.
Holy.
And the max speed on three hundred east was fifty-six miles an hour.
Fifty-one and fifty-six?
Yeah. So, um, we're trying to come up with some, um, you know, engineers, you know, the first thing they threw out was, you know, a roundabout where we're great. And I'm like, no, we don't like roundabouts, it wouldn't be good for school buses, that kinda stuff. So we're kinda trying to come up with some ideas to do some traffic calming. One of the things we're looking at is putting one of those speed limit signs that has the radar, so if you're speeding, it flashes at you, um, that's a, um.
How about if they're speeding, we shoot them?
Um.
With a radar.
Is your mic off?
Wait a minute.
Radar, I like that, radar.
So, there, there's some things, so we'll, we'll get that finished up and kinda get some recommendations on what we wanna do with that. But I kinda wanted to kinda report back on the, the volume and the speeds for you, so you can see that.
Thanks.
Um, the sewer project, they are, like, um, was mentioned, they're, they're pretty much done. We've got some cleanup to do, um, in the fields and, and again, I'm gonna, you know, we've talked to UDOT, um, kinda follow up with them and see what they're thinking, because it, you know, I drove over it today again, I was like, yeah, this is not smooth, so. I'm, I'm surprised they haven't said anything, but I haven't heard anything from the contractor yet that they've gotta do it, but I'll talk to UDOT again on it. Other than that, that's what I've got.
Uh, Scott and I talked a bit today about striping, uh, crosswalks, uh, in particular, Leslie. And we talked about, um, some road projects for the fall, so we're, we're working on, um, some slurry seal and some striping potentially.
And we've got, um, we've got the storm drain on one hundred south with UDOT.
And we've, you may think that all I do is just hang out at the playground with grandkids, but we did have an issue. Yeah, it does, it does, um, but we did have an issue with one of our grandkids and we've already approached Scott Simpson with it, with Beaver Creek about it, but it's right over here. It's a, it's the, where one of the ditches go, uh, goes underneath Main Street here. And so it probably is a state issue, is what Scott was warning us, but there is a, there is a, where the ditch is there and it, it's basically a two-foot drop. And it's big enough around that a kid can fit in there and go in, and which is basically what we had with a, uh, a three-year-old grandchild.
David, let me get with you and, and look at that, because Trevor and I and Scott have had some really good working relationship with UDOT in the last little bit. In fact, we're, we're working together on a fifty-fifty cost split over on some issues by Zions Bank. So let's get together and, and then I'll, I'll see if I can address that.
That would be great, some, some sort of protection.
Is this just right on the corner over here?
Yeah, this, this right here where it's right here in front of, is it the Pitt House, build?
Uh, Myrtle Pitt's house.
Myrtle Pitt's house, yeah.
Or Nettie, Nettie, I'm sorry, Nettie.
Used to be, uh, the law firm and everything else.
Peterson, yeah.
Right there, right there where one of the flowers are. Kid fell in and if she.
Is it just a grate that needs to be put back on?
Yeah, it could be just a grate that, that, uh, that Jack Clegg could be welding up and.
I think UDOT probably has some of those over in the art, let me, let's look and then I'll get with you.
Alright, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay.
As I was gonna say, we, because we did when they came through and did that storm drain project, I don't know, that's probably been five, six years ago now. Um, we did kinda talk to them about that.
I'll go look at it tomorrow and I can call the guy from the state.
It's Todd, Todd over, yeah, Todd's good, Todd's been good to work with.
Cool, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else for Scott? Okay, Trevor?
Sorry, let me write this down so I don't forget. Um, I don't have a whole lot to report, we got Fiesta totally cleaned up, um, started doing some water and sewer maintenance projects. Next week, we're gonna start replacing some service lines on four hundred south and also one hundred east, as you'll see us after the math. Um, the last couple, or last week, we had been doing some continued education courses with water and sewer, so we kinda get some stuff like that on the way, but that is all I have to report.
Trevor, it's off-the-wall question, but when's the last time we flushed out our hydrants?
Um, we started this spring, we've started on the south end of town, we're two Center Street, we're going through and exercising all our bowels and flushing the fire engines out.
Okay. I don't want a repeat of what happened down in Francis.
Yeah, so if you go through, if you see a, we actually.
Blue tag?
A cow ear tag.
Yep.
Anyone that has an ear tag on, we've done this year.
Okay, alright, great.
I will say, with the, um, the amount of water that the fire trucks pull versus the amount that we flush is a lot different. And you could still see some issues even though we flushed, because they flushed that line, um, they used that line, um, all through June for our sewer flushing and stuff. And they fill their water truck with that line, so a lot of it has to do, you know, we can go through and flush, but when they come through and put the pumper trucks on it, it pulls a lot more volume of water than what our flushing does. Well, it's, it's, it's a higher volume, it's faster speed, that's picking up, you know, silt, rocks and stuff that have, that won't be moved by our flushing.
Just by flushing?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, because that's what I heard happened.
Yep.
Two times, the water got shut off.
Yep.
Because of rocks in the hydrant.
But it's, like I say, we've, we've flushed that line, um, they fill their water truck with it, um, they fill all their, when we do the sewer flushing with out of those lines. And they filled out of that hydrant and they said, that's never been flushed before, and we're like, no, we pull a lot of water out of that line, so.
Okay.
So it's, um.
It's a limitation of what flushing can do versus what a fire truck can do.
Yeah, it's good that we go through and flush and stuff like that, but, um, I was surprised when he said we had a problem, so.
Okay, thanks, Trevor. Uh, Brad asked to be excused and, uh, I failed to mention upfront, I think that Councilor Bateman asked to be excused too, so I apologize for that, she did ask to be excused. Uh, Brad's report, he sent it to me and I'll read it from the email and then Kim, I'll print it off so you can include it in the minutes. Uh, he said, we had approximately a hundred and twenty-two calls, now this is over a six weeks from July first to today. So a hundred and twenty-two calls, uh, Camas City handled seventy-two of those, Summit County handled fifty of those. So that means that our police department is handling fifty-nine percent of those and the county is handling forty-one percent of those. He also asked me to read this letter that a citizen, uh, sent to him based on a contact that this person had had with one of our police officers during the Fiesta days, uh, during the night of the Derby. July nineteenth, this letter, uh, and I'm just gonna read you the letter and, um, anyway, this letter is an apology to one of your police officers while attending the demolition derby. This evening, I was walking down the sidewalk toward a gas station. You can all see where this likely occurred. I could see several police cars but kept walking on the sidewalk. A female police officer, uh, maybe forty years old with a, with a, with a blonde, uh, ponytail stopped me from going further toward the incident. I didn't realize what was going on and rather rudely told her that I needed to get to the gas station. She then said there had been an incident and I couldn't go that way, I'm sorry that I responded that way to her. Uh, police have enough to deal with without having a grown woman who knows better, uh, respond with rudeness, please tell that off. Uh, police have enough to deal with without having a grown woman who knows better, uh, respond with rudeness. Please tell that officer I apologize. Thank you again, a chagrin, chagrined citizen who won't let it happen again, uh, which I think is a compliment to our officers and the way they handle situations and the way they deal with the public when the public's willing to write an apology like that. So, that's a commendation, I think. Um, so that's the police report. I have a couple of things I wanted to, uh, report on. Uh, you all may or may not be aware that this week, Friday night, is the movie night in the park, sponsored by the Summit County Health Department. And, uh, the movie this week will be The Wild Robot, for those of you who are interested in going. It starts at, um, the event opens at five, the movie trailer's at seven, we'll have a welcome, and then the movie begins at seven-thirty. That's this Friday night in the park. Um, you all saw, I hope, the, um, thank you note in Dropbox from the Lions Club for, um, for, uh, our working with them. Uh, the last thing I want to mention to you, and this is brief, 'cause, um, there's still some moving parts, but if you're interested in, uh, the progress of the districting commission, we, uh, and you can read this in the Park Record and KPCW, but we did, um, come to a consensus on a map and a list of precincts that, uh, outlined five districts. And, um, we, uh, voted on that, and it passed unanimously, and it will be forwarded to the county council. Uh, as per House Bill three fifty-six, the county council has thirty days to hold a public hearing and approve that, uh, map and district, um, districts. So, if you want more in-depth information, I'm happy to sit down and talk with you, but again, um, we're in that thirty-day period, and there's some moving parts, and so that's what you could read in the paper. Any questions on that? Okay, uh, is there anything else before I ask for final motion?
I just wanna say thank you to all of our Camas City staff and police force and Public Works, and everybody who helped us pull Fiesta days off. Without you guys, it would not have gone through, and you guys stepped up to the plate. So, thank you to all of our city employees for a job well done.
Yeah. I second that. That was great.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, though. We adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.